I'd like to call the January 11th Penn Trafford School Director's name to award the pleasure of allegiance.
I pledge allegiance to one I, the United States of America, and to the Republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Mrs. Listen.
Here.
Mr. Pichas.
Here.
Dr. Kosch.
Here.
Mr. Leonard.
Here.
Mr. Matarazzo.
Here.
Mr. Namek.
Here.
Mr. Petrusi.
Here.
Mr. Stovall.
Here.
Dr. Trey is absent, you have four members present.
Thank you, Mr. May, you're welcome. Okay, um, may I most of the approved, entertain most of the approved minutes for December 7th meeting?
Motion.
So move with Mr. Namek, second on motion.
Second.
Second, Mr. Pichas, you got any question on motion? All in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Motion passed. Okay, information, Dr. Harris.
All right, we're gonna actually first of all start off, kind of change A to D up a little bit quickly because we have a special presentation by PSBA, and I would like to go over the penitent.
Thank you very much, Dr. Harris. Ladies and gentlemen, my name is Joseph Hansick, I'm a member of the Canada MacMillan School Board, I'm also the president of the IU One Board of Directors, but I am here tonight in my capacity as a governing board of the Pennsylvania School Board Association, and on behalf of the association, it's President Kathy Swope and our Executive Director Nathan Maines, I wanted to thank all of you during this School Board Director Recognition Month for all of your time, you know, you volunteer your service for the constituents of the Penn Trafford School District. One of the reasons that I'm here tonight though is, PSBA has this tradition that after you hit eight years of service, we come around and give certificates to people that are their eighth year of service, their 12th year of service, and so on, and also, we give plaques to those people that have achieved more than 24 years or more of service. And I have three certificates, actually four, tonight, and one plaque to present, so if I could just present these, I have one for Mr. Dallas Leonard, for eight years of service. And Mr. Scott Poska. One for 12 years for Mr. Philip Pichasik. I'm guessing PJ has, since moved on, I have his.
He's on vacation.
His certificate for.
You can label with us.
Thank you. But like I said, one of the reasons why I'm here tonight, instead of the association mailing the certificates out, is we try to get a board member out to present plaques, anybody who has dedicated 24 years of service, or more, to their local school district. As we all understand, some people get involved in school boards by being told it's, you know, just one meeting a month, and it's only like an hour, and, you know, as we all know, that's false advertising, because of the number of hours that you have to dedicate to the service of your district. So someone who has achieved 36 years of service certainly deserves somebody to come out and present them with a plaque personally, and that's what I'm here to do tonight for Mr. Nick Petrusi, who has achieved 36 years of service to the Penn Trafford.
Very nice, came out a cold evening, nice that PSBA does this for people who put their service in. All I'd like to say is that I've worked with some great board members, great superintendents, great administrators, and all in all, it's been my pleasure serving charity. Thank you.
And the two of our school board directors, we do so much, and I just had a, if I had a look back at the last couple of years of our big thinking items, just kind of read to you, there's so much, and I didn't go back 36 years, I just went back the last couple years of different things that we do, and different things that you actually do for the community, but I'm just gonna take a few moments and read them now. We approved a $32 million budget project, using the rate that we were paying for the prior budget project, which enabled us to add no new millage to do the high school projects, and that was great. We aligned staffing needs and hired 113 different teachers, 12 student learning assistants, 54 support personnel, the current high school principal. So, we approved a $600,000 per year technology purchase, and approved a new timeline for technology to make sure that we're always up to date with all of our technology initiatives. We approved a new method to evaluate admin and teachers to ensure more accountability. We approved and established a requirement that the district will have non-negotiable goals. We established a virtual or blended cyber school, which saved the district already $60,000 over the last two years. Every school in Penn Trafford, under your leadership over the past years, received a Keystone Award for every single year that the award was given. We approved credits for the high school level, taken at the middle school. We added the SRO officer. Over the past years, our average scores have always been 85% advanced, proficient, or higher. We approved new athletics, including lacrosse, rifle club, bowling, and field hockey. We approved countless numbers of policies and admin regulations. The district has met the capital improvement project, three teacher contracts, general inflation increases, Peers funding increases, with millage increase below the county average. We approved a competitive bidding for the transportation, which saves $250,000 annually each year. Currently now, and this changes daily, depending when you go to school digger, right now, we're in the top 12% of the state. And one of the best things that this past year we got recognized for is the district, and you either say we're the 26th from the bottom, or we're number 474, the lowest cost per pupil per district. So we do all of that, and yet, we spend lower than 473 other schools per pupil. So I think that it's great, and we really try not to raise new mills, we try to do it at a cost, we try to be cost effective, and we are, because I don't feel like we're lacking, when you were saying, well, what four do we need? Of course, we always love to have four, we always like it, I don't feel like we are lacking, I don't think we're unfair, so I really do appreciate that, so, I know that you're always proud of that too, with everything that you do, so thank you so much.
I'd just like to add, though, we just had our evaluation of our superintendent, and I would say, Dr. Harris, you deserve much credit for that. You stepped in, you've done very well, the board is very pleased, and continued success to you.
I appreciate it, I appreciate it, that's on tape, too. Thank you. All right, tonight, we have a student union representative, Trent Sims.
Thank you, Dr. Harris, just some things going on in Penn Trafford High School, the PTO babysit, cat projects, for this week, PTO babysitting at Sunrise McCullough, a book labeling event, and they have pet friends. Students are also writing their buddy letters, and if you know about that program, we get buddies in elementary school, they write a letter, we write a letter, we talk to them about health, getting involved in the community, stuff like that, and then we get to meet them, and so, we're on our second buddy letter, I think we'll do Wednesday, need to get on Also, the student union is planning senior prom, we're getting all of our decorations and everything planned, all right?
Is there a thing this year?
We haven't decided yet.
Not that far, okay. You always come up with great ones.
Thank you, Trent.
All right, thank you. And this is actually something that our school board had a couple of years ago, which is our favorite part of each meeting, it's kind of why we do everything that we do, and that's the students of the month. And to actually be selected as student of the month, it is very difficult, because we only have eight meetings out of the year where we use student of the month, so it's really 24 students out of a total of almost 4,000, so when you see the odds, I don't want to say every better chance of winning the power of all, it's not that bad, it's hard to do, because you really have to work for it, and everyone's selected for different reasons. But this is why we do everything we do, this is why we have school boards, and this is why we have meetings, and this is why when we come together and we're sitting here for three hours, wondering why we're arguing over something, this is why, it's because of moments like this. So I'm gonna kind of turn it over to the principals, who I value, and they always do a great job presenting and bringing the students to us, and I'm gonna start with the elementary in the eastern corner.
Thank you, Dr. Harris. Kylie, you want to come on up? Okay, so Sunrise Elementary would like to congratulate the elementary student of the month for January, Ms. Kylie Piccone. Kylie is the 11-year-old daughter of Michael and Heather Piccone, she is currently a fifth grader at Sunrise, she has three siblings, Brant, her 15-year-old brother, who is a sophomore, Taryn, a seven-year-old first grader, and Gianna, who is a six-year-old kindergarten student. We are so proud to have Kylie in our school and our district. Mrs. Goldsworthy, who is here today, her homeroom teacher said, Kylie is an all-around great young lady, she is not only a stellar student, but also a wonderful friend to everyone. In the classroom, Kylie comes to school ready to learn, she is always organizing class and a very hard worker, she is ready and willing to participate in any task at hand, Kylie is also a big helper in the classroom, you can call on her to help with anything, and she always does it with a smile on her face. Kylie is a team player outside of the classroom, too, she will jump in to help fellow classmates play a game of football or basketball, and she always shows good sportsmanship. When I spoke with Kylie, she told me that her favorite part of school is doing math in groups with her friends. Kylie is interested in being either a math or social studies teacher when she gets older. Kylie is involved in quite a few sports, PT travel soccer, PT travel basketball, and the Lady Vengeance travel softball team. The softball team is also made up of students across various districts, not just Penn Trafford. Kylie also enjoys reading all kinds of books, and has signed up for the Battle of the Books competition in May that the district is hosting. Kylie told me that she plays with her sisters a lot, and she loves her dog Cole. Kylie mentioned that her dog Cole is crazy, was her word she used for him, especially when they give him a bath. I asked Gianna and Taryn, who are both here today, about Kylie, they both gave me one quick quote, Gianna told me that she likes to play soccer with Kylie, and Taryn said, sometimes she plays with me and helps me with my homework, and Taryn's favorite thing about Kylie is that she does really well in school. In speaking with Kylie's mother and father, they told me that Kylie is always looking out for and thinking of everyone but herself, she puts 100% into everything that she does, she's very caring, loving, athletic, and helpful, Kylie has a great judgment and character, and they look forward to see where she will go in the future and how blessed that she will be. We always tell her, this is their quote, that if she continues down the right path, that she has endless possibilities and can do anything that she puts her mind to. It is my absolute pleasure to recognize Ms. Kylie Piccone as the Sunrise Elementary Student of the Month.
Congratulations, Kylie, made your family very proud, being a teacher is a very proud profession, and I also am a dog lover.
The next we have our representative of middle school, is Mr. Jim Simpson.
Thank you, Dr. Harris. Luca, could you come up front, please? I want to introduce Luca Picari, he's an eighth grader at Penn Middle School, he's our January student of the month, he's the son of Dale and Lori Picari of Manor. Talking to his parents, they share that Luca demonstrates and retains his humility regardless of the situation, on how he deals with success and failure. He also manages to stay calm in stressful situations and puts others first, which is one of his strongest characteristics. He's a tremendously hard worker, he recognizes success is driven through hard work and practice, along with staying positive and never giving up. He realizes this is what success is all about. His parents are very proud at how he has developed these humble behaviors through minimal guidance from others. He is a naturally good-hearted and humble young man, it's another joy to watch him grow up and develop these noble traits. Then witness him use this to promote happiness among his family, his friends, and people he meets during the day. I cannot be any more proud of the man he is becoming, and very thankful to have the opportunity to witness their young man grow up to be such a good person. Luca's all about baseball, he is, he travels, I know from different states, and he plays on travel teams, and that is a big portion of his life, but he's an exceptional student. When he's not playing baseball, he collects postcards and foreign money, have to see that when the exchange rate comes in, you have to talk to Mr. Simpson about that. When talking to his teachers, they say Luca exemplifies the model student, polite, helpful, driven, strives for excellence, he takes pride in his work and respects others, he's gone above and beyond in the robotics classroom, his work is exemplary, he's done everything I could ask a student to do, and he's always willing to help those in need, he's a joy to have in class. Ms. Rimmel says, I knew from the moment I met Luca that I really enjoy him as a student and a person. Luca never fails to deliver a smile, and his easygoing personality results in him being well-liked by his peers. He has a way of making everything he does, or say, appear smooth and effortless, he's intelligent, hardworking, and attentive to details, he is very deserving of being student of the month. Teachers continue to say Luca's polite, hardworking, always comes to class ready to learn, he strives to figure out challenging problems without teacher assistance. Luca's an active participant in my geometry class, and not only excels in geometry, but all his studies. He's maintained 100% for this year throughout the second quarter, which is the highest grade in the class. I have to say, Luca's got style, too, as the principal, you can see right here, he has some style, you know, it takes, to do the plaid with the checkers, I gotta say, Luca, you're a man of style, but I'm very proud that Luca's a member of Penn Middle School, and I'm happy to congratulate him as the student of the month. Congratulations, Luca.
I love that first name, that is a super first name. Los Luchas in baseball, do you have the All-American baseball down in Trafford? They have a nice program down there, you can play all in ball fields down in Trafford also?
Yeah.
They do some great instructions, my grandsons are involved in that. Great, continued success to you, and that math is very important, again, congratulations.
And finally, we have from our high school, we're gonna have Mr. Sarah Seedy.
Thank you, Dr. Harris. Hannah, could you come up, please? I'd like to present to you Ms. Hannah Fallett as the January 2016 High School Student of the Month. Hannah's an exceptional student, not only here at Penn Trafford, but also at the Central Westmoreland Career and Technology Center. She's a senior, and she's in her third year of the welding metal fabrication program, and is one of four females in that shop. Now, welding in general is a male-dominated field, and obviously, in her shop, Hannah's easily surpassed all the other girls, but even according to her teacher, Mr. Bauer, she's surpassed all the boys. Hannah's basically the top. Now, she's already taken and passed her first professional weld certification test, the ASW D1 dot 1 SMAW, limited thickness, vertical, 3G, right? All right, I got that. Now, what makes that impressive isn't the actual length of that title, but it's because she did it in her first year. Now, Mr. Bauer indicated it usually takes beginning students two to three years to learn the skills necessary to pass this. Hannah did it year one. So, with that, kind of shows that she excels. So, to go beyond, Hannah basically blew everybody out of the water and was invited to participate in the Central Career, Westmoreland Career and Technology Center WCCC Academy Program, which is the dual enrollment program, where she's able to take college courses within her field of study. So, because she is an overachiever, Hannah has already taken two, completed two, and excelled at two. So, she's already a college student, and she's doing well there. Now, her drive and dedication sets her apart from everybody else, and with this drive and dedication, she's always looking for a new challenge, and that new challenge within welding is pipe welding, which, from what Mr. Bauer has indicated, is the pinnacle of welding. So, he said that he's not even actually supposed to teach pipe welding, because it falls outside the competencies that PDE recommends that they teach. When I asked him, he kind of said, oh, that's because the kids can't do it, it's too far beyond. So Hannah took that up her junior year, so she's been now practicing at that for the last year. So she's hoping to earn her pipe weld certification this year, which, by the way, she'll pass the certification test. Now, contrary to what you're saying, she's not bashful, she's not timid, she's not quiet, and all of that is actually going to serve her well, because she's not one to sit back, she wants to learn, she wants to know the information, and if she doesn't understand it, she's gonna pester you until she gets the answer, because she wants to know it to be able to apply it, to be able to succeed. And that's kind of been the Hannah I've known for the last four years. You're never one to be shy, you're never one to hold back, you want to know everything, you want to learn everything, you want to master everything so that you can be successful in life. Now, you're a perfectionist, are you not?
A little bit.
That's your motivation, that's what drives you, it's clearly visible, and it's gonna serve you very, very well, because you're never gonna rest on your laurels, and you're always going to be able to achieve whatever you put your mind to. So I'd like to present to you Ms. Hannah Fallett as the student of the month.
You will never start being a welder.
I know.
You're selling and arc, you're both, you're selling welding, too?
Uh, mhm.
Just arc welding, okay, that's still a great field, and continues to, when I was teaching at Norman, one of my girls, the female student, she took paralympics, and she did very well, so, girls do it differently, we're all boys dominated, girls.
We do even better.
That's.
Thank you.
Hannah, did you take the course at that Advanced Technology Center, too?
That's, yeah.
That's true, that's actually, it's kind of a segue, the whole board is actually having the meeting next month at the Advanced Technology Center, because we all wanted to see the different courses, because I saw the welding program there, too, and the board actually went to see us, so next month's meeting on the first will be actually held at the Advanced Technology Center, where she got some of her advanced degrees already.
You'll enjoy it, it's a nice.
Hannah, how did you get interested in welding, if I can ask?
Well, I went for the, you know how we do the visits when you're a freshman? Well, I was gonna do automotive, and then I was like, eh, I don't know about that, and then I was actually going to do cosmetology, and we went to visit, and I was just like, ew, nope, can't do it, can't do it. Then I was thinking about either carpentry or welding, and I just, I picked welding, and of course, I looked at, you know, how much to make.
You're a very positive role model. I have a daughter, and I, you know, I wish she was here just to look up to you, I think you're doing great things, continued success.
You care yourself very well.
Yes.
Very well, keep that smile.
Thank you.
We're gonna take a moment for all the winners of the student of the month, they come up and get a photo with the press.
Oh, I thought it would affect them. Thank you, thank you.
All right, a couple other things I just wanted to mention, one, congratulations to cheerleaders, they did win the competition, they have to, so they're going to the Hershey Tournament. Jim, did you have the dates for that?
Thank you.
I know your daughter's on that.
Yes, it's next Friday, and if they do well, well, they're gonna leave Thursday, and then they'll go Friday, if they do well Friday, then they'll continue to play on until Saturday.
That's exciting, they did very well the last three years, they've, now that every day they've made it the last two years, it was kind of great to see, and keep getting better.
Those coaches do an excellent job.
They're everywhere.
Yeah.
And I like the fact that there was three this year, so it was kind of nice to have more people covering more events, so it was, it was great to see. Tomorrow, we just got this text from Carrie, the Tuesday game for Norman is a double header, it's gonna be, I just want to get this right, because I don't want to, it's, it's the game of the week, it's the quad A game of the week, the ladies and the men are both playing basketball against Norman, so it should be a great game to watch, it's a great night, and it's the game of the week, so.
Is it home?
It's away, it's in Noren.
Sorry, speak to me.
Which station is that on Skype?
It's, I'm looking at it right now.
I was looking at the person who sent the email, it's the whole way down, Carrie said, please mouse this mic, he just don't know, but, um.
Okay. It's broadcast, doesn't say the station.
It's really from Randy Boers, and I'll to, you're right, it doesn't say where it's broadcast.
Don Rebel, who's he?
Don Rebel?
Yeah.
MSA?
I think it is MSA. Yeah.
It's always great to have, but you know, definitely, that's his line of work, he's going into something, too, right, so, he knows all this stuff, so I appreciate it.
That's MSA, thank you.
I did announce already that the next meeting, when the young lady receives her award, we are gonna be seeing the Advanced Technology Center, but I also want to make that aware, we put that on the website, we announced it already in the newspaper, so, if you show up here next month, February 1st, we will not be here, we'll be at the Advanced Technology Center, so.
And you're welcome to come to join in the tour that we're gonna have.
Anyways, there is, I want to see, we're gonna have a second, we're gonna have a tour of the facilities, and.
Very educational.
Are you interested in coming, Georgia, or?
If nobody has a meeting that I don't know about, what time is the tour? Is it before, or is it?
Tour would be about 6:30. I'll double check with Janice, because she says she announced that, and I'll make sure she did. We're also gonna have a discussion, I know we've been talking each month about our building project, and one of those, we talked about, you know, different things, about teasers, and about funding throughout the last couple of months, and we talked about the student enrollment declining, and just different things, but tonight, we're gonna talk about the different concerns we have at each building, we've been really studying this, great deal, and we've put everything into two categories, capital funding and general funding, how we're planning on funding the projects. I'm gonna turn it over to Brett, I want to see, does everyone have an extra copy of what, I should have extra copies later.
Everybody have a copy of our spreadsheet that Mr. Bracco had delivered this evening? You know, the past several months, we've been refining this list, trying to prioritize what repairs and maintenance items that need to be considered as we go through the process of developing a long-range plan for the district facilities. Ultimately, we need to get to the point where we decide which buildings we're gonna operate, what they're gonna look like, if we're gonna restructure the district, and all of this discussion goes into that decision-making process. So basically, where we're at currently is, there are two separate sort of projects, as Dr. Harris mentioned, there are capital projects that we just can't assume to pay for from the general fund, and then there are upkeep items that need to be done, that we can pay for through a line item that we have in our budget for contracted maintenance services, and if the good weather continues, and today's not a good example of good weather, but, you know, we've been very fortunate with the price of natural gas over the past several years, we've maintained the budget level at the prices that were in effect four or five years ago, but fortunately, with the price of gas now, we're hoping at the end of the fiscal year to have some money remaining in the utility category, which would enable Mr. Bracco and his maintenance crew to do some more of the things on this list. These are items that would take place over the next three, four, five years, depending on what the priorities of the district end up being. So, just, I'll quickly go through some of the items that we can pay for through general operating expenses, and accelerate some of these repairs, again, if we have the savings in the utilities. That would be, we need to address boiler pumps in each of the buildings, we have some multipurpose room lighting in, McCullough that needs upgrading, we need exterior doors and frames to rot the district, which we will replace on an as-needed basis, go into fiberglass as opposed to the metal doors that tend to rust out. We have multipurpose room floors that need replaced, we have kitchen equipment that needs upgraded, we have classroom carpeting that we replace on an ongoing basis, we have concrete repairs, we do it on an ongoing basis, and we have a standing water issue down at Level Green that needs addressed, and some of our gas houses on the district need improved. We can assume and pay for those expenses through the general fund operating budget. Now, the decision that has to be made is, some of these major projects, and I'll let Mr. Bracco speak to them, but basically, to fund those, we have limited options. Option one would be to float another bond issue to pay for these repairs. A second option would be to take the money that is dedicated in the Peers and renovation fund that we set aside, the dedicated fund balance, and start drawing down on those dollars to make some of these big-ticket repairs. And then finally, we have, we won't know until the project's over, but we borrowed additional money over and above the cost that we expected for the high school renovation project, if any of those funds remain, those dollars can also and would be dedicated to capital projects. So, Jim, can you speak to some of the bigger projects and? So Jim, can you speak to some of the bigger projects and over what timeframe some of those would be?
Well, if you go into roofing, for example, we have a lot of roofs that were done basically in eighty-five and ninety-two. And those roofs are all coming of age. The district did a district-wide renovation at that particular time. The roofs are twenty-five years, twenty, twenty years plus. And those are something that we need to split out over a period of years to get on top of because unless you have a good roof, you don't have a good building. So you, you know, you have to, you know, the roof is very important. Over at Penn Middle, for example, we have drive it that's failing all around the building. We have stage curtains at both middle schools. The stage curtains have been dead hung. They're no longer retractable because of the age. So we had to dead hung them, dead hang them so they couldn't be raised and lowered and it limits the availability of the stage. We also have lighting, which is in the same, basically the same, those lights have all been dead hung in both middle schools. We have sound systems that we need to replace. We have hallway tile carpet, for example, at Trafford, at McCullough, and at Level Green. If you walk in those schools, the carpeting's in very poor shape. It's very draft. They need, they need replaced. We have boiler replacement needs done at Penn Middle and Trafford. Those boilers are at the end of their useful life. They're, they're pretty aged. We have windows at McCullough that need to be looked at. And lighting upgrades, that's pretty much low-hanging fruit there. We have a lot of T-12 bulbs on a lot of the schools that we can upgrade. And basically, the lighting upgrades will pay for themselves over about five years. Fire alarm upgrades, all the fire alarm panels in the district are, they're aged. The parts are becoming obsolete. They need to be taken care of as well. And we have two schools with limited emergency lighting. They don't have generators. They have other various ways of, of emergency, putting an emergency lighting in that building. We need to look at those to improve those as well. So that's it in a nutshell, really.
And part of the discussion, I think, the board need to consider going forward is if the district's gonna be realigned as we go through this process, if buildings are going to be closed and we're considering other options with buildings, you know, do we want to invest eight hundred fifty thousand dollars in a roof in a building that may not be here for five years? So those are some of the decisions that have to be made over the coming months. And again, we provide you this information for your consideration and your deliberation. And in the coming months, as we move forward, you know, we'll keep refining this. We'll put the fires on as they come up. But to start tackling some of those really big capital items, we need a little more direction in terms of what the board wants to do moving forward. So any questions that we can answer right now? Any additional information we can get for you?
The high school project, if we stay on our current trajectory, I know we've had some delays in the addition, but we do, we hope to finish exactly when. As if they're coming in today, saying if there's no more delays, where do we think they finish?
Well, the contract documents call for the project to be completed August twenty-fourth, I believe it is. But I can, I can tell you that I'm sure they'll be doing punchless items through September or October. But we have, we, we should have the vast majority of everything done when the kids come back in August.
So sometime in September, we'll have an idea of what our, what cash may be available from that project.
I would tell you that we, we really should not be approving any change orders after that June board meeting. I'm not gonna say we're not going to, but August for sure, we should not be approving any other change orders.
Any other questions from, I know, Jim, you highlighted the roofing two thousand sixteen, seventeen, eighteen, nineteen. Any other recommendations for the other ones or just the items on the list for the capital?
Well, that's, it's all gonna depend on how we fund those. It's all gonna be by funding.
Now, we can continue, if I'm correct, to repair those roofs. For example, those two thousand sixteen roofs that we have, we can put that off for a little bit of time and repair those roofs as necessary. This would be the recommended timetable that we got from our roofing consultants. But, you know, we have the ability to just keep maintaining them in the short term so that we can make an informed decision about what we're gonna do going forward.
We're trying to prevent issues like we had at Sunrise where Sunrise had a, the roof was going bad and it was emanating a smell into the building. And we're trying to, we need to eliminate any future concerns like that as well with these roofs, so.
But I would encourage all of you to, you know, if you have any thoughts, concerns, questions, shoot us an email, give us a call, stop in and see us so that we can, you know, continue to refine this and incorporate all your thoughts and ideas so that, you know, we give you guys the best information that's available as you make your decisions.
I personally think a big, big piece of this puzzle is getting back on track with the district-wide plan. Because like you said, it would be foolish to put two million dollars in a building that may be gone. Or any money in a building, you know, I don't care if it's a hundred thousand dollars. But I think we need to give priority on getting back on track with our district-wide plan on what we, what we want and how we're gonna possibly do it. I don't know if we could have a, you know, just a workshop-type meeting to do that. I don't know if that's possible or where we concentrate solely on that, you know, and not, you know, ten other items.
Richie Brant, a good point in that, you know, we're making, we make decisions about putting roofs and things of that nature on there, but it also impacts the academics, the curriculum that we do, the staffing that we do, the course offerings and things like that. And to know the structure and what the school will look like with all the buildings, that helps us administratively make those kinds of decisions relative to staffing and curriculum and things of that nature. So, you know, it needs to be done more than just on a maintenance standpoint.
Any other questions for the maintenance?
I'm just looking at Penn Middle and McCullough. And in three years, you're gonna spend over two point two million dollars on those roofs. Is that, you guys think that's worth it? I mean, I'm, because you got one point one million with Penn Middle and then McCullough, you got another one point one million.
That's kind of what I'm alluding to, Sean.
Yeah, yeah, I mean.
It's, I mean, if we're having, obviously if they're staying open for twenty years, we would have to. But if they're not, that's what we want to kind of talk about, what we're doing with the district comprehensive plan. We want to make sure that we're fixing buildings that are gonna be around. I agree with you, Sean. Any other questions?
I have a lot of response to Billy, but I don't want to go through them now. It's been here for so long. It's, you know, it all comes down to finances, you know? We gotta prepare for it. And we did it before, back in the nineties, we set nine millies aside over about a five-year period. You have to, that's where you have to go. PT just has older billings and consolidation is probably the best way to go right now. But again, you have to raise some funding to pay for, you can't do this with consolidating. But, you know, you gotta, whatever the majority of the board wants to do at that time, it's not easy. You raise millies, a lot of people don't have kids in school. They don't want to hear about their millies increase. But, you know, the nicer your billings are, the higher their property value is too. It's something they also can keep in the back of their head because that's been proven at Norman next door to us. They got beautiful billings and their enrollment in the whole county is the only enrollment that has increased. And it's, it's attracted, and it's attracted parents. But right now, our high school is, it will be premier this time next year and that's definitely will help us. Okay, any else, Dr. Harris? All right, thank you very much. Real quick, real quick executive meeting we had, the why we relate executive session. And the board held executive session immediately prior to the next meeting to discuss personnel matters and receive information from superintendent. Okay, recognition of visiting, no one signed up today, so now we're gonna go into the trades report. I now entertain a motion that we pay the December two thousand fifteen trades report for extracurricular fund in November two thousand fifty to be approved as part of our official minutes.
Motion.
Motion by Mr. Kachasik.
Second.
Second, Mr. Neem. Any question on motion?
Question.
All in favor, signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Motion passed. Payment of bills. I entertain motion to pay listed bills for January two thousand sixteen.
Motion.
Motion by Mr. Leonard, second.
Second.
Second, Mr. Kachasik. Any question on motion? All in favor, signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Motion passed. Okay, old business?
None to see you, Mr. President.
Thank you. Executive session, I just discussed executive session. Any new business, we'll go. Athletes and extracurricular, Mr. Kachasik. I mean, Dr. Koschko, sorry.
May I defer to that, please?
Can we start it off?
I'm gonna start.
Can we start the first motion?
Okay, okay. I'm sorry, I'm sorry.
May I move to approve the renewal of the excellent health athletic training services agreement? The automatic renewal for the twenty sixteen and seventeen school year will be at the current rate of twenty-eight thousand. The amounts for the following five years will be as follows. The twenty seventeen to eighteen will be twenty-eight thousand. Twenty eighteen and nineteen will be thirty. Nineteen to twenty will be thirty thousand. The twenty to twenty-one will still be thirty thousand. And then in twenty-one and twenty-two, it'll go to thirty-two thousand.
Second.
A motion of force, second, Mr. Neem. Any question on motion?
Question.
Pull the board.
Mrs. Issing.
Aye.
Mr. Kachasik.
Yes.
Dr. Koschko.
I'm staying.
Mr. Leonard.
Yes.
Mr. Matarazzo.
Yes.
Mr. Neemick.
Yes.
Mr. Petrucci.
Yes.
Mr. Stovar.
Yes.
Dr. Trey's absent. The motion passes seven yes, zero no's, and one abstain.
And I want to thank Dr. Koschko. Very big input in this, very excellent performance. Thank you very much for that.
I'd like to have this, um, last, last week, this has saved us a great deal of money because if we was doing it under the old system, we'd be over seventy thousand per year and if you look at it now, what we're paying, so. And we had top-notch ladies for athletic trainers, so I really appreciate. And the amount of money we saved at the same time.
We're gonna put that into roofs.
I don't think it was that much savings.
No, it was a nice saving.
Okay, Dr. Koschko, you want to continue?
Yes, thank you, Mr. President. We accept the following resignations effective immediately. Denny Little, assistant varsity softball coach. Tina Skelly, JV softball coach. And Chad Wazo, junior high girls head volleyball.
A motion by Dr. Koschko. Your second on motion?
Second.
Second, Mr. Leonard. Any question on motion?
Question being called for.
All in favor, signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Motion passed.
Move to approve the following extracurricular volunteer and volunteer coaches. Extracurricular volunteers must have their Act thirty-four, one fifty-one, and waivers on file with administration. Coach volunteers must have Act thirty-four, one fifty-one, and one fourteen waivers on file with the athletic director. Steve Fulton, mock trial volunteer at Penn Trafford High School. Sean Lander, boys volleyball volunteer coach. Dennis Little, volunteer softball coach.
A motion by Dr. Koschko. Your second on motion?
Second.
Second by Mr. Matarazzo. Any question on motion?
Question.
All in favor, signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Motion passed.
That'll be all, Mr. President.
Thank you, Dr. Koschko. Budget advance, Mr. Koschasik.
Thank you, Mr. President. Move to approve the following expenditures for the high school renovation project according to schedule as listed.
All right. A motion by Dr. Mr. Kachasik. Any second on motion?
Seven.
Second by Mrs. Issing. Any question on motion?
Question.
Question. All in favor, signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Motion passed.
Move to approve the following change order as listed.
I'm, Mr. Kachasik. Any second on motion?
Second.
Second by Mr. Matarazzo. Any questions?
Question.
All in favor, signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Motion passed.
Move to award the bid for diesel fuel for the two thousand sixteen, seventeen school year for the school district's quantity request to port petroleum under WIU joint purchase consortium for fuel as identified as the lowest responsible bidder. Meeting or equaling specifications for diesel fuel at a fixed rate of one point six to eight seven dollars per gallon.
A motion by Mr. Kachasik. Any second on motion?
Second.
Second, Mrs. Issing. Any question on motion?
Nick, do you have a question, Mr. President?
I'm sorry.
Brad, does this go for our vehicles or for the vehicle, our vehicles and the buses as well?
This is strictly for the buses.
Okay, so it's not our vehicles?
It is not.
We can't tap into that for them?
No, because we're not running diesel.
Well, I didn't know if any of our trucks are diesel.
No, I don't, none of them.
We just have movers, diesel mower, tractor. Okay, thank you.
You're welcome.
Okay, it's been questioned. All in favor, signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Motion passed.
Move to approve the purchase of a new control system and replacement NCM controllers from Johnson Controls, amount fifty-five thousand, eight hundred and fifty dollars. This will be paid for the savings generated by the cancellation of the Hunterwell contract.
Second.
A motion by Mr. Koschko. I have a second by Dr. Kosch, I'm, Mr. Kachasik, and a second by Dr. Koschko. Any question on motion?
Question.
Question. All in favor, signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Motion passed.
That is all I have, Mr. President.
And thank you for that last one. That's really gonna help Jim and the maintenance garage and the whole district, so I appreciate it.
Mr. Brack, I see you have to meet back with you real quick. Okay, billion grounds of safety, Ms. Leonard?
I have nothing for today, Mr. President.
Thank you, Ms. Leonard. Employee relation, negotiate, transportation, Ms. Issing?
Nothing to report, Mr. President.
Thank you, Mrs. Issing. Food service, Mr. Neemick?
Nothing tonight, Mr. President.
Thank you, Mr. Neemick. Personnel and curriculum, Mr. Stovar?
Yes, thank you, Mr. President. Move to approve the list of additional substitute teachers and support personnel for the month of January two thousand sixteen.
Motion by Mr. Stovar. Any second on motion?
Second.
Second by Mr. Leonard. Any question on motion?
Question.
All in favor, signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Motion passed.
Move to approve the following leave requests. Christine Chesky, Kelly Kylebok, Patricia Ludwig, Melissa Mattis, Patricia Metz, and Christina Wukic, all for the reasons listed and dates listed.
A motion by Mr. Stovar. Any second on motion?
Second.
Second by Mr. Kachasik.
Question.
All in favor, signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Motion passed.
Move to approve the following student-teacher assignments for the two thousand fifteen, sixteen, and the two thousand sixteen, seventeen school years as listed.
A motion by Mr. Stovar. Any second on motion?
Second.
Second, Mrs. Issing. Any question?
Question.
All in favor, signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Motion passed.
Move to employ the following personnel. The new employment is contingent upon receipt of all necessary documentation to the acceptance of Act thirty-four, one fifty-one, and one fourteen waivers from the Commonwealth of Pennsylvania within thirty days. Emily Ogden, paraprofessional at Level Green Elementary at ten thirty-five an hour effective December fourteenth, two thousand fifteen.
A motion, Mr. Stovar. Any second on motion?
Second.
Second, Mr. Leonard. Any question?
Question.
Question. All in favor, signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Motion passed.
Move to give final approval to the Penn Trafford High School program of studies for the two thousand sixteen, seventeen school year as submitted to the board.
A motion, Mr. Stovar. Any second on motion?
Second.
Second, Mr. Kachasik. Any question?
Question.
Question. All in favor, signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Motion passed.
Move to approve the following conference requests.[1630.33] Move to approve the following conference requests. Glenn Cooper, there's a list of five different conferences with different dates below. No cost to the district, I believe, on those.
There are no costs.
There are no costs to the district.
Yeah, he's also the chair of the new training committee. So he has attended all those conferences, has his new responsibilities. I appreciate the fact that Larry does all this because he actually puts our name out there for a lot of great places and he works a great deal, so thank you.
A motion, Mr. Stovall.
I have Jeff Newsom and Mark Romeo, Project Lead the Way, Principles of Engineering Training Course in Rochester, New York. For the dates listed, the cost will be $7,449.49.
Yeah, I wanted to interrupt there because some of the money's paid through the grant. In order for us to do Project Lead the Way, we're continuing the course now at the high school. We have to have those courses. They have to actually go through the training. What they do is they take them through the whole entire course. So once they leave the training, they have done the whole entire course for the year. And it's expectations from Chevron, whoever gives us the grants, that we all, all the trainers have the adequate training, so that goes with it. So we probably will share some of the costs. Some of the costs is also covered through a grant. But I have to tell you, it's an outstanding program. And if we wanna have an outstanding program such as Project Lead the Way, we have to go through this program, so...
And I'm sure Rochester's a lovely place to visit this time.
Okay, one more item. Marty Corna and Carol Palmer, FBLA State Leadership Conference in Hershey, PA from April 11th to 13th, 2016. They will be taking 12 students to compete at the state level and participate in a variety of workshops. The cost to the district will be approximately $6,256.
And I'll just chime in on that too. This is always budgeted into their yearly program. They do this every year and they include this in part of all the spending that they do for the school.
Okay, a motion, Mr. Stovall. Any second on motion?
Second.
Second, Mr. Neem. Any question on motion?
Questions.
Question. All in favor, signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Motion passed.
And I do appreciate it. I also do appreciate all my teachers. If you think about it, right, there's five who were giving up days with their family and going the extra mile for our students. So I like to see that. So thank you.
One more item. Move to approve a field trip proposed for 45 high school forensic science students to visit the Department of Forensic and Investigative Science at West Virginia University. They will depart from the high school 7:30 a.m. and will return to the high school at 2:00 p.m. Once the board has approved the trip, WBU will confirm a date. The only cost to the district will be $700 for buses.
A motion, Mr. Stovall. Any second on motion? Second by Dr. Koschko. Any question?
Questions.
Question. All in favor, signify by saying aye.
Aye.